I'm chairman of the Lundary Utilities Committee and I'm going to be calling to order a public hearing that we're going to conduct this morning for our proposed community power aggregation program. Just a couple of housekeeping measures first, since we typically don't have members of the public, welcome, number one. Nice to see some members of the public here to listen to what we have to present. If there is an emergency, we have emergency exits in that corner of this room and in this corner of the room. Please go to the nearest one that you can get to safely and stay outside until our public safety officials tell us that we can go back into the room. And with that, I'm going to open with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So once again, thank you all for coming. This is not a regular Utilities Committee meeting. We are not going to be conducting any other business other than holding the public hearing this morning. And with that, with us this morning is Stuart Ormsby. Stuart is the Vice President of Power Supply Strategies with Colonial Power Group. Colonial Power Group and Freedom Energy Logistics is our chosen partner that we're proceeding forward with on this project. Stuart has a lot of experience with these types of programs in other towns and other states, and we feel that they're going to be a great partner with Lundary going forward. So with that, Stuart.
Thank you very much, Lynn. And thanks for the folks who joined us today. I apologize, my back is to you, but thank you for coming. I appreciate your attention to this. So today, we're holding the second of two public hearings. As Lynn teed up, our company's been working with the town to develop a community choice aggregation program plan. So this is, so today's public hearing is talking about the plan that the committee developed with our assistance, and we're going to talk about what an aggregation program is, what the town can expect with this. Just before we get into the details of what we're talking about today, just a little bit sort of process in terms of next steps. So at the conclusion, after we have the second public hearing, which is a requirement of the state statute, the committee will then return to the town council to get its final vote and approval of the plan that is developed. It then gets filed with the state's New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission for its review and approval. And once approved, then the town is free to launch its program when market conditions are good to do that, and we'll get into that as part of this presentation. So the dates on there are just sort of indicative of the potential timeline, again, with the plan getting approved sometime this fall, and then perhaps launching the program early in 2025. So what is an aggregation program? What is it we're talking about? It's a really unique opportunity that was enabled through a change in the state law just a few years ago. So this is a pretty new opportunity for towns and cities to take advantage of. And this has been a pretty successful opportunity, if you will, in several other states. Massachusetts, for example, has been doing this for a better part of 15 or 16 years. Rhode Island got underway three or four years ago, and several other states, New York also, has been doing a lot of this. And so there's a lot of good track record, a lot of history we can look to in terms of success. And so what do I mean by success? So what this is all about is it's providing an opportunity for a town or a city to form a buying group on behalf of its residents and business consumers, those consumers who are currently taking their power supply from their local utility. So here in Lundary, we're talking about Eversource and then New Hampshire Electric Co-op. A key element of this program, it's called an opt-out program. And what that means is, like I said, any consumer who is currently taking their power supply from their local utility, they would be considered to be in the program unless an individual decides to opt out. So unless that customer says, no, thank you, appreciate the opportunity, but no, I want to stay with the utility, and they can do that, and we'll make that seamless in terms of keeping them out of the program if they wish. Also importantly, the program is not intended to interfere with an individual's ability to make their own decision. If they want to buy power supply directly from a third-party supply company, they can do that. And similarly, the program is going to go out of its way to not interfere with anyone's contract that they currently have in place. So if you're currently under contract with Direct Energy or one of the other several suppliers, you will continue to have that contract. We will not enroll you in the program. It's a self-contained program, and what I mean by that is it doesn't impose any cost on the town itself. They don't incur any cost to run the program, any administrative costs, for example, with, you know, for Colonial's assistance in the program, that's built into the rate that customers pay for the program. So some benefits of the aggregation program, and the benefits I have sort of explained over the course of several slides here, and just for starters, the key part of this program is to try to provide better pricing than customers are currently getting from the utility service rate. And an important element to understand how Eversource, for example, I kind of tend to use Eversource as an example, but I'm not ignoring the Co-op customers here. But Eversource, as does the Co-op, they buy their power supply on a six-month schedule. There's nothing, they just follow a process that's given to them by the state utility commission. And so there's nothing strategic about why or when they buy, it's every six months. And the chart here is just showing, this is sort of a forward price index. If you're familiar with the Consumer Price Index, this is something similar. This is plotting forward electricity prices over time. And as you can see in this chart, prices are extremely volatile. They go up and down, you know, the super peak just back in 2022 was that painful period of time when customers behind Eversource here in New Hampshire were paying north of 20 cents a kilowatt hour for their power supply. And so you can see in the fine print there, I apologize, this is a little bigger, but those were the dates in June and December, over the course of a couple of years, that Eversource made their purchases. And again, it's on a schedule. They didn't seek to buy at a great time, that's just they're following a process. And the point I'm trying to make here is that aggregation programs, again, working on behalf of your residents and your businesses in town, you can be much more strategic. You can seek out buying opportunities at trough points when forward prices are really advantageous. As an anecdote here, one of the communities here in New Hampshire that our company works with is a town of Hampton, and they're a little bit earlier in the process, so their program is now up and running. And the point in time when they bought is that low trough point on the far right in, it was late February, early March when they bought, and so they locked in a really nice price for their residents. Customers were enrolled last month and they're underway, and they're now achieved, they've achieved about 15% savings off of their Eversource, off of their Unitil bill, the utility there is Unitil. Again, so in addition to, we're trying to get price savings for customers, and also there's an opportunity from price stability. In other words, as I mentioned a moment ago, Eversource buys its power in six-month strips. And so as a customer of Eversource, you're seeing, tend to see, you know, some price fluctuations in your bill every six months, up and down, up and down. The town here has the opportunity, if it wants to, to get away from that price volatility and offer residents more price stability over time, you know, less up and down. But what's important to understand is with a strategy like that, if, for example, the town were to secure a two-year price, for example, the Eversource rate does fluctuate up and down over that period of time, and there could be periods of time when the Eversource rate, sort of by luck, dips below the program rate. But again, the objective here is to achieve savings over the supply term that the town locks into.
So just a quick question. So we know Eversource is going out for a supply rate increase right now. I think they've applied to the PUC to do that, so our bills are going to go up, the price is going up, our bills are going to go up, starting in August, I believe?
August 1st.
So we see rate changes, they're steady for six months, but they go up or down at the end of that six-month period.
Correct.
So with this program, are we going to see steady rates for 18 months or two years, whatever we end up negotiating, and then we'll see a rate change, or is it going to be kind of just a smoother bump, smoother set of bumps?
Yeah, exactly. I think the, your last point there is smoother bumps. It's nearly impossible to have, you know, really levelized pricing over many, many years, but it does smooth things out. And again, in combination with being more strategic. So let's say, for example, that the town gets pricing and it really likes a two-year term, that seems to be the sort of the sweet spot. Important to understand is that in terms of procuring the next power supply contract, we now have two years ahead of us to look for a market opportunity to buy the next contract. It's not a case, in fact, you want to stay away from waiting to the last minute because now you're stuck with whatever the market is at that point. So we're looking for, you know, two years gives you a lot of runway to look for that next trough point and then lock in the next contract. And to have those bumps, like you say, be, to minimize those bumps as much as possible.
Okay, great.
So again, we, as I mentioned already, it's, you know, this is providing another option for consumers. You know, you don't have to be stuck with your, with the Eversource rate or the Co-op, it's all valuable alternative third-party supply contracts. Important with the program is a lot of flexibility. In other words, you can opt, as a consumer, you can opt in or opt out of the program at will, basically, without fee or penalty. So you're not locked in, you know, we've been using a hypothetical example of initial program of two years. Each individual consumer isn't locked into that two-year contract. The town is committed to its supplier, it's going to have a two-year supply term, but individual customers can opt in and opt out. So say, for example, you start out in the program, and five months in, you see a really attractive opportunity to sign directly with a third-party supplier. You can do that, you can take advantage of that. Perhaps you're served by that supplier for five or six months and then jump back into the program if you want to do that. And again, no exit fee, no penalty, no entrance fee. The table here is just an illustration, I need to emphasize, the prices in the table are nonsense. Again, these are just made-up prices. These are not the prices that Lundary may see when it goes out to bid. I've got to say that two or three times. But the point I'm trying to make here is that if the town decides to do so, it has the option here to offer more than just one product. And typically, towns like to offer two or maybe even three different product options for consumers to choose from. So the town will always select what they call a standard product. And so that standard product is a product that everyone is initially enrolled into, that, you know, because it's an opt-out program. So that's what people are put into. However, an individual customer can opt into one of the other product offerings. And typically, those other options offer a higher renewable component. Folks who put high emphasis on having 100% renewable, they can do that if the town makes that kind of offering available to them. And the point for putting these made-up prices is to give you sort of an order of magnitude in terms of, yes, you can get 100% renewable product, but it does cost you a little bit more, you know, maybe two or three cents a kilowatt hour more. Now, another really important thing to emphasize here is that your relationship as a consumer with Eversource and the Co-op doesn't change. They continue to maintain the poles and wires, they keep your power supply on. If a storm comes through and the power is knocked out, and you want to contact the utility to make sure that they're aware that you don't have electricity, you still contact Eversource. The town's program doesn't get in the way of any of that. The billing is still through the utility companies. You'll still continue to see, receive a single bill from the utility. The only thing that changed is just a single line item on that bill. So instead of your power supply indicating that it's coming from Eversource, for example, it would instead say, the town of Lundary Aggregation Program. That's the only thing that changes. And similarly, if you have any general questions about your bill, you still work through Eversource or the Co-op around billing. The, you know, the utility companies are kindly doing the billing on behalf of the town's program.
And that's really the same if somebody went out and set up their own individual contract with a third-party supplier, right?
That's right, correct.
They would still be working with Eversource in this capacity.
Exactly, yep. Any other services you may currently be receiving from Eversource continues, it doesn't interrupt that. So if you're set up with budget billing, if there's some energy assistance you receive through Eversource, you continue to receive that. This does not interfere with those things.
Quick question.
Yes.
If you wanted to opt out, do they call you, or do they call Eversource?
Either works, actually. If, you can call Eversource, and they will, they will drop you back to their supply service if you wish, or you can contact the program supplier. That's typically the best thing to do, because the program supplier is, as you can imagine, I mean, they're, imagine a customer service, they have, you know, instant information, they can immediately get you unenrolled. I say immediate, I've got to be careful here. It's, every, and I'm glad we were bringing this up, anytime you switch in and out of the program, that can only take place on your meter read date. So whenever Eversource comes out to read your meter, that's the period in which you can opt in or opt out of the program. That's dictated by the utilities.
Which is about once a month.
Exactly, about once a month. But again, back to your core question, there is best to contact the program supplier, we don't know who that is yet, but we will make that abundantly clear, how to get in touch with that company. So net meter consumers, so here we're talking about anyone in town, or business for that matter, who may have rooftop solar. Really important thing to emphasize here is the way the utility programs are set up with those customers, if you're, if the solar on your roof is sized in such a way that there are periods of time when you are generating more electricity than you're consuming in your home, which is often the case, the utility companies have a program whereby they will give you a credit for any excess generation. Unfortunately, just the way the market and the rules are set up, a supplier who is serving Lundary's aggregation program does not have the ability to provide that same credit to you in that situation. And so for that reason, we will not be automatically enrolling any net meter consumers, because we do not want to risk interfering in those credits that you're currently receiving from Eversource or the Co-op. So again, if you've got rooftop solar, you will not automatically be enrolled. If, you do have the option to opt in if you wish to, you know, if you kind of do the careful math, and maybe you have a relatively smaller rooftop solar, and you're never, you never have excess generation, then for your situation, absolutely, the program may be a good value opportunity for you, but you would need to opt in, you need to kind of make that decision yourself. And then the third bullet on this slide is just we're collectively, you know, we along with a number of other companies in the state are working with regulators and utilities to try to change that so that a program supplier can provide that credit to consumers, but don't hold your breath, it's a complicated situation. I think that we're on to the last slide now. So thinking ahead a little bit, so the, the program gets filed with the commission, it gets approved, we're now sometime in the fall period, Colonial Power and Freedom Energy will be working with the committee to issue a request for proposal for program supply. So in other words, it's a competitive solicitation to get best prices possible from suppliers in the region. The program will only launch if it can secure a rate that's below what the utility is offering at that time. If it's successful in doing that right out of the gate, wonderful. And what's going to happen next is we will, we will be mailing out what's called opt-out notices to all the eligible consumers, and again, ineligible customers, someone who's currently taking power supply from their utility company. So mailings will go out to those customers about 35 days before the program is about to launch. The opt-out notices give a lot of detail in terms of, you know, what are the product offerings, the two or three offerings, what is the Eversource rate, or what's the Co-op rate? It'll be tailored to whatever the customer is. It'll have all the information on how you can opt out, you know, what's the phone number to call, or phone numbers to call. Colonial Power will be setting up a dedicated program website just for Town of Lundary, and so on that website, customers go online and opt out if they want to. And importantly, so the other thing that's going to happen is, on that notice, we will include an announcement of a public information session. So we will, at least one, one or more, but certainly no less than one, public information session that'll take place, you know, about two weeks after that notice goes out. And so we will come back, and we will give you a lot more details. I mean, today, this is sort of conceptual of how the program works. Obviously, we have no prices to share with you today, but at this information session, we will have actual prices, we'll kind of repeat some of the key points of the program, and importantly, make sure you understand what your options are, and make it clear to you how to opt out if you want to do that. Yes?
Will there be other ways that you're going to publicize this, other than the letter to, you know, would you put something in the newspaper, or?
No, absolutely. So we'll work with the committee and the town itself in terms of getting the word out, because that information session is the most important one. Make sure people understand what's going to happen next, so yeah, we'll, every which way possible to get the word out, so people understand, yep. So that's, I think I've touched on everything. Happy to take any questions people may have about the program.
So just one, I think, comment or a question maybe on staying informed with the dedicated program website and, you know, social media, that's something that is included in the Colonial Power.
Yes.
End of the deal.
Yes.
The town's not going to be on the hook to hire someone to run a social media site or.
Absolutely.
Or a website or anything like that. I want to stress that.
Yes.
There's really no impact, from a tax perspective, this program, to the taxpayers of the town.
Correct.
It's on the ratepayers, and hopefully, you know, we won't go forward if it's going to cost the ratepayers more money, but, you know, we'll hopefully be saving everybody a lot of money.
Exactly.
Any questions from the front? Good.
I'd just ask one. When you talk about the actual contract, excuse me, when you go out and purchase the energy, is that locked in for the period of time for the entire length of the contract, or will it change during that time?
Thank you for the question. So the contracts we'd be signing would be a fixed rate for a term. So it would be, and I'm just going to make up a price, so the lowest price offer that we got from suppliers is 10 and a half cents a kilowatt hour, and it would be for a two-year term, it would be locked in. The only thing that might change that rate, there's, the contract would have a provision that allows for a rate change if there is some unexpected regulatory event. So let's just say, for example, that the state legislature convenes and decides to increase the renewable portfolio standard obligation on suppliers, and it goes into effect in three months' time. So that's something that no one predicted, and so, you know, there's an allowance for, you know, a slight adjustment in the rate because, you know, they can't be stuck with it, you know. But other than that, no, it's a locked-in rate.
Okay, great. So this is a public hearing. I invite anybody that has any questions to come on up, and if you come on up, please provide your name and your address for the record, please.
Richard Blonsky, 89 Hall Road. I got a few questions. Based on whoever, whatever town you're dealing with right now, what is their savings, oh, do you have anybody in New Hampshire? I guess I should start there.
Sure.
All right. So what's the percentage of savings on that? Because it's only, one thing has to be made clear, is it's only on the supply part. And I've got a lot of people talking to me, oh, my bill's $200, if it's $10, I'm going to say. I'm like, no, you're not, it's the supply part. Supply part of my bill last month was $48.88. So if it's 10%, that's $4.80 a month, it's not that big a deal. But to other people, it may be. So who has the best rate now, and what's the difference between PSNH, where PSNH is, I'm still PSNH, Eversource right now, and the source that you were able to get under contract? Because this is really a program that's no different to what's been out there for years, other than you're going in as a group instead of individually.
Yep.
That's one.
So I'll take that one first?
Yep.
Yep. So the enabling statute for aggregation in New Hampshire wasn't too long ago, so this is still fairly new. So currently, we have, we have just one program in New Hampshire that we're working with that has launched, and that was the example I mentioned earlier. So this is the town of Hampton. So they locked in a rate of nine point, hopefully I get this right, 9.245 or 425?
Eight and a half.
Yeah, not, yeah, low nine cent range, the, and Hampton just happens to be served by Unitil, not Eversource.
Okay.
And Unitil's rate that just got approved just a couple of weeks ago, starting in August, is about 10.7 cents a kilowatt hour. So 9.4 to 10.7. So I think it's, rough math, I think it's about a 15% savings for the town of Hampton.
Okay, roughly. All right, that's number one. Number two, how long has your company been long, been around, how strong? How strong are they? Because the town here, and I didn't have the time to research this, but I do remember this. At one time, we were going to have solar panels put up on the Auburn Road land site and they signed a contract with them that, from what I understand, that company went belly up. And they were looking into something similar to this before in the town and that company they were dealing with went belly up. This is what I was told. I do remember the Auburn Road thing. I just was told about this yesterday, so I didn't have time to research it. What happens if you guys are gone? How long have you been around? How strong's the company? And what happens if for some reason you go out of business?
Right. So sort of two parts to that. So Colonial Power Group has been doing municipal aggregation in New England for about 15 years. So in Massachusetts, we currently manage about 100 different town and city programs, including some of the smaller towns are in the Berkshires, but also we manage the city of Lowell and the city of Boston. In New Hampshire, in addition to Londonderry and the Town of Hampton, there's about seven other towns that we're currently working with, including Merrimack, Northampton, Hancock, and Greenfield. They have, several of them have approved plans, but they haven't launched yet. So again, but our longest history, of course, is in Massachusetts. The other part, though, is the suppliers themselves will be serving the program. And so we've been working with a number of the larger suppliers now, again, in Massachusetts, but they're all very experienced in serving power supply in New England. And so they've got an abundance of experience in how to serve these programs and do it effectively. And these are major national corporations with excellent credit rating and strength.
So you're going to be running the program. If you're gone, what happens to the program?
Well, I mean, if for some reason we fold as a company, the town can replace us with another energy consultant. We were just administering a program. It's a supplier.
I understand that. You're the middleman. You're the wholesale buyer and we're the retail customer. Because at one time, we were told, when the power plant went in, there was this big to-do about your rates are going to cut this. This was one of the selling points during the big AES problem. And that was never the truth because they couldn't sell to the town. They could only, they were wholesalers, selling on the spot market. All right, so that's it. So we got the opt-out. Is that by legislation?
Yes.
All right, do we know what the RSA is on that?
50/50.
I mean, because I have a problem with that. So you're opting, you're buying, I guess I already know the answer to this, maybe I'm not, you'll correct me if I'm wrong. So I don't know how many, what do we got, 8,500 buildings or something like that in town, whatever the number is. We'll call it eight grand, 8,000. So you're doing it over the 8,000. Now, are you going to look into their bills to see how much they're using and know how much to buy? And what happens if only 25% of these people stay in the program and you anticipate 50 or 60%? Are you just going to buy all that energy anyway and use it on your other customers?
Yeah, so, correct. So the, once the program's approved, we would get historical usage information from Eversource for those eligible customers, right? And you're right. So one of the things that the suppliers have to factor in is they're going to make estimates about how many, what percentage of that kilowatt hour load is actually going to be in the program? How much is going to opt out? Because to your point, there always is some portion of residents who say, no, this isn't for me, I want to make my own decision or I prefer to stay with the utility. And it's perfectly fine. So there's a lot of sort of history, if you will, because these suppliers have been doing this for so many years, they have a really good sense of what that opt-out rate's going to be. And so they'll procure the power only that's necessary based on sort of that net projection.
Okay, so it's kind of a guessing game. With some background to it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
It's surprisingly consistent, the opt-out rates. So they have a lot of history to build, to work from.
All right, well, I guess the two things that the committee and your company have to make clear to people, because I've heard this many times over the last few months, people think it's off the whole bill until you explain to them it's not. It's only the supply part, which is the smaller part of your bill. And I've heard people not real happy and I guess you get no control over this, this opt-out thing, where you're putting people into something without getting their okay to put it in. Personally, I have a problem with that. I don't want people in my business unless they ask me. And I guess that's not your fault, but... So I guess that's all I have for now. I'll probably come up with more.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Craig Glazinski, 50 Woodmont Avenue in Londonderry. I have a question about the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, which is a nonprofit organization also set up by various communities to purchase power. And it's been active for a few years now. I'm just curious how this competes or interfaces with your services.
So it really doesn't. So there's three different aggregators, I'm going to call it an aggregator for lack of a better term, there's three different aggregators operating in the city of New Hampshire right now and the Community Power Coalition is one of those. Colonial Power with Freedom Energy Logistics is another one. And the third one escapes me, I have it in my notes somewhere. But it's really our committee understanding what each company offers and working to determine what we think is the best for the community. So with Freedom Energy Logistics and Colonial Power, we have a contract with them right now that has been in place for something else for a number of years. The contract is, do you know the rebate program? The name of the rebate program? Bart would know it if he was here.
Oh, you mean the hydro credits?
Yeah, the hydro credit. So we are under contract with them for another program. We have good experience with them, working in that. And that contract goes for another, I think, a year and a half. It goes through the end of 2025. So we decided to go forward with Colonial and with Freedom Energy Logistics at the end of 2025. If we find out that they're not who we think they are, we have the opportunity to move somewhere else to.
So you can compare and decide, make a decision and change suppliers if you wish. The second question is, I belong, I live in a retirement community here in Woodmont. It's about 200 units, about 300 people. How would this work with a large?
Baldwin?
Yes. How would this work with a large energy supplier or energy purchaser?
I don't know what their arrangements are. They very well could have their own supply source already established. I would expect that they're not buying from Eversource. I don't know if we have any insight on that. It's a retirement community, it's an assisted living, a retirement community, but it's a large operation.
Right. And so I gather then that you don't pay an individual electricity bill. It's built into...
It's built into the rental.
Yeah.
And from my understanding, they are purchasing from Eversource for this first year of existence. And at that point, they have an option to go out on the open market.
Okay, yeah. And almost always, a facility of that size is going to do better contracting directly with a third-party supplier. They're able to get really competitive rates contracting directly.
But yours is a third-party supplier, correct?
No, that's right. But it's the, a town program like this is really designed to provide residential and small businesses opportunities that really aren't available to them in terms of competitive pricing. Larger facilities, just because the size of their load is attractive for individual suppliers, they can, more often than not, they can get better rates going directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Robert Labrou. I live at 76 Hall Road. Couple of things on this opt-in and opt-out. I guess I'm not going to get an opt-out letter because I already have a third-party supplier I buy my electricity from. So, but I read the papers all the time, I look at the town's website all the time, so I'm sure I'll be all right with that. As far as opting in and opting out, I like the fact that you can opt in and opt out. I do that several times. I've never, well, only once, I signed a lock-in, can't get out without a big cancellation fee contract. And some of those cancellation fees, I've seen them as high as $350. Right now, I'm with Direct Energy on a no cancellation fee. I've canceled with them a couple of times before. One time, they lowered my rate. And right now, I'm paying more than default by just a tiny bit because I could have opted back out for the six-month period and I've got a pretty good rate and I had two more years left on my contract. So we'll see what happens. But the opt-in, opt-out, you know, it's not like you're playing the stock market, you got to check the price every day. But you do have to be active and keep an eye on where the prices are going as soon as they're available, which is, they're not always available as soon as you would like them to be, we'll put it that way. So you have to pay attention to it. And as far as when you do opt in and out, my experience has been that, for example, my meter read date is approximately the fifth of the month. I got to get a switch order, a change order in about midway through that billing cycle or it goes another whole cycle beyond that before it kicks in. So you're like, here, okay, I'm losing 25 bucks this month, you know? And it's good, I'm glad it's happening, I'm glad you folks are doing this. Like I said, I've been in it from the onset and, you know, monkey math off top of my head, being an all-electric home, including heat, including hot water, including air conditioning, of course, I would say easily in the hundreds of dollars over the years, perhaps in the thousands. So it's worth doing and I look forward to what you're going to have to offer.
Great. So I would like to say one thing, Mr. Labrou. So there is no penalty if you opt in and opt out of this program?
Yeah, that's a big key right there.
You know, I want to make sure that, yeah, everybody understands that there are no penalties for opting in and opting out.
Okay, now I'm going to switch gears.
Before you move it, if the program goes through, it's going to give you some additional negotiating leverage with your supplier.
That's a very good point. That's a very good point.
Just thought I'd point that out, too.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So my next question here is, Mr. Ormsby here seems like a real nice guy. I'm sure he has the ratepayers' best interest at heart. I doubt if he's doing this for free. So, not what I expect him to be. Is there, does his organization, what their fee is, does that stay the same win, lose, or draw whether they perform well or we think perform poorly? Is there any incentive for them to perform better? How does that all work?
So that's a very good question. I don't think we've gotten that far down the road yet to look at contract negotiations. I think the fee, if I can say so, is a tenth of a penny per kilowatt hour is what you're charging?
I think, I think so. Freedom Energy is handling that contract.
Okay, so as we've talked about, it's a tenth of a penny per kilowatt hour is their fee.
And, yeah, and just emphasize, so it is fixed. It is fixed. Of course, if I may, I mean, one of our biggest incentives, to your point of, you know, what's going to incent us to perform, is the contract has a term. So we want to perform, we want to perform well in descendants, but also importantly, because we want to continue to help the town run its program, you know, for as long as they'll have us. So that's a big incentive for us to do this right.
Well, the other incentive is keeping business and finding more of it. Yeah, it's business. And I'll just shift gears one more time. Reading, I read, I follow Donald Kreis, this consumer advocate for the NHPC. And if you are with Eversource as we are, I am, we're in for some big shocks coming up. There's a big, big rate increase tariff being proposed and it'll have performance metrics built in and automatic pay raises for them, not paid like in their pocket, but, you know, rate increases. Another increase coming in a year down the road from now and it's all folded into this one. I forget the number, don't hold me to it, but I think it was around 1,000 pages, their rate tariff that they proposed. So anything we can do to contain the rate, and this is only on the energy side, I realize that, it'll be good because we're going to get hit on the T and D, transmission and distribution for sure. And that's it. I appreciate what all you people have been doing for this. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
And I will say one thing, oh, say one thing more before we go to Ron, is that one of the jobs of the Utilities Committee here in town is to watch over Colonial Power to make sure that they are doing a good job. If anybody has any questions or concerns about performance, you know, we're the conduit to go off and get those questions answered. And that's part of our charter.
I just wanted to say that one of the advantages of Colonial Power is that they manage the program for the person. So someone that doesn't have the time that you have to check the rates and make sure that you've got the best rate, they do that for us. So that's one of the advantages.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Scheppe, 28 Edgewood Drive. I just want you to remember, I know it was mentioned, that you'll be posting in probably the town newsletter, the, you know, the Londonderry paper or Dairy News, but you always remember that a lot of seniors don't have computers or any other way to communicate, maybe a mailing list for some people that don't have access to the computers and any other way. I think that would be good because, especially at the beginning of the program, because they might not truly understand what's going on and they won't get this program on their TVs.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And so the opt-out notice that will be sent out just before launch, that will be mailed, that absolutely will be mailed. And even, and I appreciate the feedback because even any other notices after that, we can make sure...
Especially at the beginning, right after it.
No, that's right, at the beginning, and that's the opt-out notice I'm referring to. But then, any other important notices, excuse me, after that, any rate change notices, those also will be mailed, in addition to making it available on the website and social media and so forth. But those important notices will always get mailed as well because of that reason.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And a follow-up question, should anyone want to call you, there'll be a number that they can call you as well?
That's right. So on that opt-out notice, it'll have our number and, of course, on the website, it'll have our phone number prominently displayed.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, anything from the front table? Kirsten, anything from the town? Stuart, Mr. Ormsby, thank you very much for coming this morning. I think it was very informative. I hope it was for everybody in the public. Our next step will be going forward to the Town Council and certainly briefing them on where we're at and what's been happening so far and getting their blessing. I look at Ron Dunn, Ron's our Town Council representative for the Utilities Committee and this is another step forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for attending. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you guys for coming this morning.
And we're done. Thank you.